And I will call the meeting to order since it's a workshop, I'm not going to bother with a roll call. I see we have mostly us and the town engineer and one other. West Lena, Lena resident Sherry, but Preston, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I first want to say really appreciate you all taking the time to join this evening, really appreciate everyone's attentiveness and willingness to participate in such a relatively short amount of time. So it's not lost on us. So Joanne, Ron, myself, we all really, really appreciate that. As most of you know, the town's intending to move forward with making improvements to Lena Street between Charles and Otto this year. We, the town has set aside funding over the last couple of years to meet the town's financial commitment. And staff is continuing to work with the Lena Street Commons Development Team to secure their financial commitment. The aim is to get the design finalized really very soon. So a request for bids can be prepared and issued by at some point next week, you know, that, that's, that's certainly a hope. We, we did host an informational session, you guys should know that on the design for the Lena Street improvements back on, it was last week, Monday of last week, the 17th. There were a variety of property owners who had joined the west side of that project, joined to learn more about the design and provide their input. I thought it was a really great meeting, Joanne and Ron did as well. So at this point, we're looking, staff is looking for direction from, from you all on the design, given the recent input and some of the challenges that have come up. I hope you all had a chance to look through Joanne and Ron's memo. It goes into some pretty good background on the project. Options for you all to consider, and then ultimately a recommendation for you all to consider and think through. If you haven't looked at it, that's okay. I'm going to turn it over to Joanne, who's going to review the original goals of the design and the improvements, the, the options, and then the recommendations. So in the end, we do need direction from you all on some of the elements of the design. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joanne.
Thank you. This project started out either in late 2017 or early 2018. It started shortly after Lena Street Commons proposed their development. And their project included building a portion of Lena Street. And rather than have just a portion of the street developed, the town and Lena Street Commons agreed to work together to be able to build the full street. Due to the need for funding, after the design was initially developed in 2018 and shared with the public, the project ended up going on hold until very recently. And with the town having been able to budget for its share of the project, the project kind of bounced back to life and we've been working on the design and some of the design questions that were left from 2018 with the hope, as Preston said, to get it out to bid very soon. The construction schedule would probably be left to the contractor. Because there's so much work out there this year, we want to at least be able to be flexible with the schedule. Looking back to when the design was prepared, there were a number of goals that the town and Lena Street Commons had for what the project should look like. These are in no particular order. The first was to make sure that the road infrastructure included everything that Lena Street Commons was supposed to install, which included sidewalk, curb and gutter. Diet 36 diagonal parking stalls and two, with two ADA ramps and the ADA parking stalls, excuse me, um, and the part with the parking, they were supposed to pave. And then another goal was for the street, which is the two blocks between two developed sections of Lena Street was supposed to look similar to the downtown project. And to take advantage of the fact that this is the only 80 foot right away in town. It was to address some of the drainage issues. Charles at Lena is shaped in a way that causes some of the water to flow across Lena into the east side. And so this, one of the ideas of the, our goals of the project was to try to get most of the water to stay on the west side from Charles all the way to Otto. Another goal was to have functional sidewalk on both sides of the street. And ensure all of the improvements met ADA and hopefully reduce the use of the roadway as a pedestrian walkway. And to optimize parking by providing diagonal parking on both sides of the street. The both in the 2018, 19 timeframe and in the last month, as the project was nearing design completion, the town shared the design concept with the residents on the west side of Lena. And we heard a number of concerns. One was a request for additional driveway cuts. A preference for parallel parking, at least on one of the blocks. Concerns about the nature and the maintenance and the water use on the landscape strips. And in the ball bouts and concerns in general about the ball bouts. As a result of the meeting 10 days ago, we looked at modifying the design to allow parallel parking on the south block. Where it looked like the grades would be favorable to allow that and confirm that that could be done. However, by parallel parking and adding some driveway cuts, we've reduced the parking in the two blocks from 31 spaces to 15 spaces. And the parking area in the block with the parallel parking would the eight would require a ramp that was not in a straight line in order to be able to meet ADA. It would be kind of on an arc. With the additional requests, after the meeting, Mayor Protim Myers spoke with some more of the residents who weren't able to attend the meeting. And there were requests for additional driveway cuts in the north block. With that, we decided to look at whether a valley pan on the west side of the driving lane, the full length of the project was practical and we would just leave the area west of the valley pan, all the way to the sidewalk as gravel. We would put the gravel in and put the fabric, well, we put fabric under that gravel area and put in enough gravel that if the town decided later, they wanted to pave that parking area. You would just need to take some of the gravel off. The structure for the road would be there. With that idea, we however, left in the ball bouts and the paving for the ADA parking spots because for ADA, for somebody in a wheelchair moving on a gravel parking area is difficult. And reasons for leaving the ball bouts in addition to facilitating the ADA parking were because the all bouts act as traffic calming. The change in width causes drivers to slow down. And I think that's always a town goal. Or at least in my experience, it helps define the intersection for drivers. And it causes them to be more alert and more aware of what's going on. In this particular case, the additional concrete before you get to the road grade provides slope, enough area to get the slope to meet ADA from the back of sidewalk to the road. The shortened distance for the road crossing is helpful for pedestrians. And the ball bouts also help to find the parking area versus the driving area. And provide room to get in and out of the parking spaces without as much interference with the travel lanes. One of the concerns I understand was that we didn't have ball bouts on 62 west of Laura, east of Laura, the ball bouts are all on the town street side of the highway. And the reason the ball bouts don't go farther is because, first of all, it wasn't originally part of the ramp design, that part got added in. But also because the narrow right of way of Highway 62 made it so that we couldn't have parking and there wasn't room for the ball bouts to go into the highway. We are going to have a ball bout that matches the one in front of Voyager on the west side of Cora and Charles. And I think depending on how the sidewalks layout on future development, the use of ball bouts is likely to continue. It's hard to get from street grade to sidewalk grade. Just with, without having a ball bout unless you lower the sidewalk and that, that's a hazard. I think the goals for tonight are to determine what should be the layout. What's on the west side of the west edge of the pavement? I think options are to stay with the diagonal parking that was originally proposed. We can do parallel parking on the south block that results in about four parking stalls being left. Okay. And we can do gravel, we can do a valley pan on the edge of the asphalt rather than curb and gutter. That option would have gravel between the valley pan and the sidewalk. And the sidewalk would remain one foot off a property line. If we did that, we could, both sidewalks, I'll show you a cross section in a minute. Both sidewalks at the moment, at the moment, they're designed to be five foot. But six foot's a lot more comfortable and they would be width on the west side with the valley pan to expand the sidewalk another foot. Another question is whether to keep or remove the ball bouts. The almost do nothing option would be to just pave the two driving lanes and the improvements for Lena Street Commons. And any combination of the above. Depending on which ones you choose, we'll have to figure out how much more design time that's going to take. I'm gonna try to share my screen. That work?
Here it is. Yep.
Here it is.
So the top drawing or cross section is the original design from 2018. It has diagonal parking on both sides, two travel lanes, curb gutter and five foot sidewalks on both sides. The one that we came up with when in response to the concerns about having more driveway cuts is the lower one, the east side of the road remains the same, all the way to the two travel lanes. There is a four foot pan in here that just looks like a typical valley pan that's two foot, you know, goes down two foot and comes up two foot. A gravel section and a fiver could be six foot walk. I think I need unshare and then I can show you what it looks like in plan view. Did that work? Do you see a plan?
Yep.
So this would just have the, the brown lines of the storm drainage. I don't think there's any discussion about that. But instead of trying to have curb and gutter in here, we would have valley pan along here. The section would be gravel and we would maintain the two ADA parking spots and the ball bouts. Is the way we have the design looking at this point. And that's basically all I prepared. I mean, open to all questions and turn it back to you, John.
Okay, thanks, Joanne. That all makes sense to me. Does any of the rest of council have questions or comments for Joanne?
Yeah, I have a question. On, on the section where you showed the valley pan adjacent to the gravel, what is the propensity or the, the probability that gravel gets kicked out onto the pavement? And I, I asked this question as a motorcycle driver. So it's easy to plan on driving on gravel. It's easy to plan on driving on pavement, but when there's a mix and you don't notice it, it gets really slippery, gets slick. It's like ball bearings essentially. So it
All over town. Yep. I've heard people say that their number one complained about our current sort of street situation downtown is the places where the gravel meets the, the paved aprons next to the highway, the gravel gets carried out onto the apron and creates a messy situation for everybody.
Which I guess would still be the case at the intersection of Frederick and is it Charles or this is Charles, Charles gravel to the west of Lena? I guess it is still, right?
Half and half.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there was any way that if we, I mean, it seems like there's, it sounds like anyway, that there's consensus amongst the residents that they'd like to see this lower drawing on, on the, the staff report with the gravel parking on the west side and the valley pan and the sidewalk. That that gravel section be something a little more innovative, one of the permeable. I don't know if any, any of you are familiar with the way they did the parking at Alpine Bank. They used to, I think it's a plastic matting that they then fill in with a fine pea gravel kind of thing. And it much less likely for the gravel to migrate. Probably more expensive, of course. But seems like, I mean, there's, I guess there's some cost savings in doing it this way and graveling that instead of paving it. And maybe that money could be, go towards a more innovative permeable solution that doesn't allow the gravel to migrate so much. I'm, I'm totally in favor of that idea. I get how the neighbors want things to stay pretty much the same. And you see this in your A, you see it in, on the east side of Lena on South Lena by the hardware. You know, I think it, I think it can work, but it would be nice to try and have it be a more managed gravel setup.
Can somebody who was at that meeting on the 17th, I understand the, the driveway cuts, like that totally makes sense. I think that's something we're going to see as we move into paving things that are more residential. We're going to see more of those driveway cuts. But why do the residents want parallel parking?
I don't, I don't know that the residents actually said that they wanted parallel parking, but I think that was kind of the engineering approach. Once they saw all the driveway cuts, because the concern is, is that you lose, I think it's three to four diagonal cuts, diagonal parking spaces per driveway cut. And, and some of these hadn't been identified in the past and are relatively new. So there, at the end of the day, there ended up being a lot more driveway cuts than had originally been anticipated. So that was why the adjustment to go to parallel, because it was just because of the number, high density of driveway cuts. It was becoming ineffective to do diagonal parking.
That was my understanding too, with a number of driveway cuts, so that diagonal just didn't work, period.
Okay. On the other hand, the parallel parking is harder to fit between the driveways because it's so much longer. So either way, you lose a lot of parking spaces.
Right. This may have already been vetted and I wasn't present, so pardon me if that's the case, but why, is there a significant need for a the sidewalk on the west side, if you have one on the east side? Is there, would there be that much foot traffic to where you'd need sidewalks on both? And if you didn't, if you could eliminate the sidewalk on the west side, would that change the calculus on whether you could, whether it be parking or use of gravel versus paving curb, all those kinds of considerations. But I guess to my, my main point, is it absolutely necessary that we have sidewalk on both sides?
My take on that would be that
Ron, I'll kind of answer that a little bit. The sidewalk on the east, because of the Lena Street Commons development, the way it is, will have a lot of grade breaks. They have so many doors that face the street and they're very close to the street. And the way they designed their building was we were going to have to, when we put the sidewalk on the east side, it will have some jogs up and down to kind of meet their criteria. What we tried to do on the west was to make the sidewalk as smooth as possible with the least number of grade breaks so that it would be the predominant walkway. And the secondary walkway, you might say on that street would be on the east side. What happens with a curb cut is every time you put a curb cut in, now you have four more grade breaks for each curb cut on the, on longitudinal profile of the sidewalk. So if we have the diagonal parking because of the close proximity of the curb, that would require a number of those grade breaks. If we went to parallel parking and moved it out further, which again reduces the parking stalls significantly, creates a situation where we can still get kind of a flat street and we make the elevation difference between the curb cuts and the back sidewalk where we've got to match the existing grades. We can take that elevation difference up in the distance between the curb and the front of the sidewalk. If we move the pan out all the way to the edge of the travel lanes, that gives us a, a large area that we can almost flatten out the sidewalk and have absolutely no grade breaks except for what we need at the ADA ramps. Where people expect them to have them. And so that makes it easier to, to work as far as getting the sidewalk to work there. But the sidewalk on the east is, is going to not be a smooth walk. It will be one where there will be some jogs up and down.
The other thing I was going to throw out, Terry, is that to me, that it's proximity to downtown and everything south of this section, Lena going to the highway has sidewalk on both sides. And including everything coming out of the industrial park, there's sidewalk on both sides. And it just makes sense to, to continue that for kids walking to and from school, general encouraging pedestrian traffic. I would not be in favor of eliminating the sidewalk on the west side.
And there's some really nice shade trees on the west side of Lena, which would be nice.
Right.
How does this impact cyclists? You know, speaking about encouraging pedestrians, this is a, I would see this being a connector between River Park to downtown.
I don't see how would
I'm just asking, you ride your, I don't, I, I live close enough to downtown. I don't ride a bike around. You know, Terry brought up motorcyclists, but similarly, kind of the same sort of question.
Yeah. Well, the, the gravel issue is definitely an issue everywhere. And those of us on two wheeled vehicles just have to be careful. I, I don't see how, at least for my, somebody rides my bike all over town. I don't see how the either option has a plus or a minus effect on my, my bike riding.
Okay. Just thinking user group.
Yep. No, good point.
That's one of the things on the cross section with the valley pan is there's two 12 foot driving lanes, but there's also an extra foot on that side, an extra two foot on that side that would make it a little easier to share the ride.
Okay. Um, you know, as skeptical as I am about the, the gravel pouring onto the street as I was running today and it was a little icy, the less up and down and more consistent that the sidewalk can be in those conditions is really nice for people on foot.
I totally agree. Tonight was, tonight was dicey. I went for a walk and everywhere there's sidewalk, it was like taking your life in your hands.
What an interesting representation we have for two motorcycle, bicycle and pedestrian.
Yep.
All voices are heard.
Yep.
John.
Yeah, I mean, and up and down is, is easy to deal. I, I don't think the up and down is as big a deal until you get weather conditions that are, I mean, I understand that people expect to walk smoothly. I don't think it's that big of a distraction until like today, it was like, oh, there's a change. Slow down.
If you don't have your yak tracks on, you're taking
I don't run with yak tracks, never have.
Of course, the solution is solar powered driveway milk systems.
Jerry, let's, let's handle like normal before we add, could we, people power their houses first?
Just playing with you.
I'm sure SMPA would help fund that.
Yeah, right, right.
I can get the money. It's going to raise your rates.
Solar powered. Well, so what's, I don't know, I guess my question would be, is there anybody that's either on council or there aren't many neighbors on the call here tonight, but is anybody against the, the gravel option? I think we all see its value, especially having heard, I guess through Russ primarily, that the, most of the neighbors would prefer it.
When I appreciate that Joanne said we would put the base in such that if things ever changed and we wanted to pave, that is there and we would know that engineering piece was there.
I think that's good too.
The, the octagonal map thing that you brought up, John, I've seen that in storage. There's a place in your, your town that has a storage facility that has that down. And they, it's interesting, but I'm wondering if that, one, it's an additional expense and two, would it have to be pulled out if you had to pave? In which case there's a stranded asset essentially.
It's still think, and you'd probably still get a migration out of that as well.
A little bit, but much less.
Yeah, but couldn't we also make sure that we had our street sweeper? Yeah, but couldn't we also make sure that we had our street sweeper following up on that? I mean.
We can do, we can do an adopt a sidewalk program.
We 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 bought one of those, I think so.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. Yeah.
The only other concern. I've I've seen personally with with the with the proposed plan, I like, I think the the residents are happy with option three. I know there's still some concern about bowl bats um specifically from people like my neighbors who. Want to park their horse trailer out in front of their house and it's not there all the time, but when they do, that bulb out would be an issue to park a horse trailer or a truck. And then just the concept of getting in and out and around curves. Um so. I think there is some resistance to the bowl bats, at least on the Frederick corner. Um and I would like to see if potentially we could find another solution for that as Joanne addressed. Back when we did rap, I guess it wasn't originally on the plans, but. They did end up constructing just some ADA grade. Round corners on the west side of Laura at um Clinton. And so um I think there would be preference to see if we could do something like that. But that's that's the only uh input, other input I've I've gotten from the community.
The bowl bouts, again, they're like thinking community wide and pedestrian usage. The bowl bouts just get you out, you know, it's it's that shorter crossing, it's that eye contact with drivers, it's that. Awareness piece like, and I think. You know, we've heard in other meetings in other areas, people are worried about speed like I. I start thinking about that as a community wide, you know, this is impacting the residents because it's changing, but it's also an opportunity to increase safety for the community as a whole. So I don't know.
I I agree.
We have a very pedestrian friendly downtown and core and. It would be nice to see that continued through our intersections as we continue to develop the streets. Um that'll be a very busy walking path. Very, very busy sidewalk.
The additional residents in the Lee Street Commons are going to add to that pedestrian traffic significantly.
Absolutely. Sherry, did you want to add anything?
Oh, well, just um I'm in agreement with what Kevin just. Said, I was wondering why with all the upgrades and the. Improvements, why it would not be just brought down Lena Street. Um, but you know, right across, right, right in front of the million dollar condos that y'all put in. Um, I I don't understand why you can't keep this. This the street is aesthetically nice as the rest of the center, which is just a couple of blocks away.
Um, so what?
I don't understand any of the of the end nearing though, so I'm just coming from a. You know, really a simple place.
Understood, but I tell, help me understand what you're you're um advocating for. Would you rather see?
Well, the new streets have gone in around. The heart of Clinton and all around and then. And, you know, across from the park and the library. Gray white speed but all the way down Lena Street, just continue it. With this, with sidewalks on both sides and, you know, streets and curves and gutters, it looks lovely.
Like, that's what originally the plan was. I think what what we're here to talk about tonight is that the. It sounded like the majority of your neighbors wanted to have a hybrid solution on your side of the street um in order to deal with all the curb cuts for. Driveways and um. The problems that that created for parking. So in my hearing that you're not in favor of the gravel. Uh parking area on the side of the street, that's correct.
I also think it's worth pointing out that as paving, you know, does ever expand into residential areas, it's going to be a more complex. Scenario than just being able to take what we did in Streetscape. Like then you start to get into pre-existing uses and driveways and. Um, you know, I think that's going to consistently have to be. A balance, right? Like, here's what we would really like, how close to that can we get? Which is why I'm like, safety wise, to me, like. That's kind of where I'm willing to look at the neighbors and say, ah, I don't know if we can forego the bulb outs. Um, but the the diagonal parking starts to not, it sounds like from what I'm understanding, doesn't start to pencil out anymore.
Yeah. You'll be around.
Um. Yeah, interesting, I um guess um. Might be, might be worth actually polling all the property owners along. Those two blocks of of Lena from Charles to to Otto um. I was under the impression that Russ had done that and that um. The vast majority were in favor of this gravel solution um. And and I guess I would say to your concern, Sherry, that I don't think the gravel parking, especially if we do it with some sort of. Managed um. Matt, like we're talking about a uh material that you put down first and then you put a finer gravel on top and it sort of contains the gravel more, it doesn't get muddy. It's not necessarily going to be unesthetic um. It's just different and it deals with the challenges of so many um residential lots there, each wanting a driveway. Access to the street and that completely messing with the parking potential, so um. But I'd be curious to know if there are a lot more property owners along there that agree with you, Sherry, and and think that we should stick with the original plan to have the paving on both sides.
I mean, I was Preston sent me some. Pictures of some other paved roads around. Town and the images that I saw, I just, I thought. I I was surprised, but how? How? How could you guys put this on Lena Street? They were awful. They just looked awful. Oh, yeah, I just don't have a good image in my mind of what that's going to look um. Now, just Lena Street in and this brand new development and everything that's going on on this street, which has been overwhelming for all of us. To tie it into all the improvements that have happened, mostly just a couple of blocks away.
Yep, no, I hear you.
Yeah, Mara, if I may, real quick, Sheri, you make some really great points. I appreciate you joining this evening. Um, the pictures that I sent you were uh just to be clear, were uh of the west side of Amelia Street where. Just an example of the gravel, the the sidewalk, a very narrow sidewalk at that. Uh, the gravel parking area and then the valley pan. It's not really an apples to apples comparison in my eyes since that that uh street isn't paved. Um, so it's kind of all just just gravelled, so. Yeah, I I aesthetically, you know, not the most pleasing, that's kind of the sense I. I think you're trying to get at, correct me if I'm wrong, I just uh it it's not apples to apples since the the actual thoroughfare, you know, the the driving lanes would be paved in this case. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
That's a good comparison, Preston. On Amelia Street there. I think that Lena will, each side of the street will have two distinct personalities. And I'm in favor of the gravel on the west. With a nice wide sidewalk and the bulb outs for pedestrian safety. And almost a park-like atmosphere. That's kind of how I pictured it, going over the different options.
And Joanne. Joanne, you mentioned that was slated to be a five foot sidewalk, but there might be space for six feet, and I would say if that's possible and we're saying the west side is the primary sidewalk. Um, I would love to see if that could happen.
Same.
Yeah, the conclusion at the end.
We can look at even wider, I think. The. The balancing on our end is. The the amount of extra design and trying to get this out to bid as quickly as possible. While people still don't, aren't totally booked for this year. But I think we can look at six and um we could even look at eight.
I mean, six is probably sufficient, that just feels roomier if we're if we're really saying like this is kind of the. The primary side that we would expect that traffic or pedestrian traffic to be comfortable, that would be nice.
Well, just as a homeowner on the west side, my only comment would be is. Once you start increasing that, it puts more undue stress on keeping your sidewalks clean in the event of a snowstorm, so. Another, another foot may not be crazy, but eight would be, eight would be a little, little over the top in my opinion, so.
Well, eight is significantly more concrete, I mean, I I don't think eight's necessary, but I think six would be a nice jump.
Yeah, the the last sentence of the staff report says, we also recommend making the sidewalk on the west side at least six feet wide. I think. We're all in agreement that six feet is is should be the goal.
Yeah.
Um. Well, um. Where do we go from here? Is is there consensus on council that? People are in favor of the. The gravel solution and and that that can be made to look good?
I I have a quick question before you all vote. Was it currently in the budget for um to to Sheri's point? The full um non-gravel solution, is that currently in the budget or is? It was that budgeted for, is that is that a real viable option or are we looking at? At option B or the gravel as a means for saving money or staying within budget?
Area, the non-gravel uh solution, so essentially the design that was presented on the seventeenth at that at that neighborhood meeting or whatever we called it. Um, it was budgeted for.
Okay.
At least the town's portion, the forty percent.
Yeah, that's, I was going to say, it's a bit of a loaded question because sixty percent of it is coming from the developer and they're dragging their feet on giving us that sixty percent, so.
Do they have a say in this in this decision? Since they're covering sixty percent.
Well, their side is is staying the same, so um. I Preston, I don't know, do you have an answer to that?
If there's any savings, they would save in it as well. Because it's just a sixty forty.
Yeah.
Um. I'm worried about what costs are actually going to be this year. I I hope. That our last estimate is is in the right ballpark, but. We won't know until we bid it. And we see. Also worried about not getting any bids.
That brings up another question, if if at some point the plan might be that you can put down gravel now with the uh in the future pave it. Is the cost of paving likely to go up significantly in the future? In other words, is it? Uh more efficacious or cost effective to think about paving it at today's prices than, you know, five years from now, ten years from now?
It depends on the cost of oil.
Well, I we can kind of speculate on that, but I imagine that's not going to go down much.
It's anybody's guess.
Yeah. Okay, anyway, it's just other data points. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion either way.
I'm I'm a fan of. Giving people a relatively straightforward sidewalk option, honoring the residents' interests in having the parallel parking and their driveway cuts. And maintaining bulb outs for general safety and traffic control as much as possible.
Very well said.
Yeah, I agree, and I think it does a good job too of kind of. Blending the newer part of town into the old a little bit and then as we work on. Paving the rest of town eventually, um we can work on that spot too.
But we don't have any plans to pave the rest of town before you break.
I I got that, yeah, thank you. I'll storm down, yeah, no, I'm just thinking in future, you know.
I I understand, I just want to be very clear.
I have a bit of a a wrench question, um. That sixteen foot of gravel um. Is much wider than it needs to be for parallel parking. Are we are we imagining that there could be nose in parking? In that stretch? And that's one of the issues we have around town where people just kind of, especially when there's in the unpaved parts of town where. The edges of the road are undefined and people just park any which way they they want. We we all know of the challenges we have around. Steps and that half block of of uh Cora um. I my first thought was with a sixteen foot wide gravel strip that people were going to be parking nose in.
Ridgeway is going to ridgeway. Or or diagonal. Yeah.
Or both annoyingly.
Yeah, right.
Like for the hardware. Diagonally both directions.
Yeah, opposing diagonal.
Well, it's, that's a, it's a good question. Are we, so let me ask the the two neighbors that are on the call, are you imagining? How are you imagining this area being used um every which way? Is that sort of?
At at least for my particular block, I can say that there's. Parallel parking goes on there most of the time. Anyway, I think it'll just continue to be the same.
Okay.
Joanne, what is standard width for allowing for parallel parking?
About eight feet.
Yeah.
So why are we doing?
That was my question about sixteen.
Is it just to push the sidewalk back far enough for the driveway cuts?
There there are driveway cuts with this Plan Three.
Right, well, so for driveway grade, I guess is what I'm saying.
If we move the sidewalk, we closer to the road, the grade problems increase. And it would eliminate you being able to do anything in the way of diagonal in the future if you chose. So. I think we didn't really have a plan for how that space would be used. I mean, I think. There are some people that kind of park at an angle and there are some people that parallel park and.
Well, if it were, if it were skinnier, you'd have to parallel park, right?
Yeah.
So I guess that's to John's point, is is there a need for it to be sixteen feet? What if it were ten feet and you had more paved? In traffic lane or or a wider pan or more distance to keep the gravel out of the middle of the street?
Yeah, no, then we get back.
The grid's great. Driving it more.
Could you actually make those travel lanes wider?
It would take a significant amount of redesign. To do it, I mean, but you would end up need to to keep the crown. Where it is now, if you just widened the one. Then the grade would be steeper going back up towards the west property line. And moving every widening everything. Would be a significant redesign and I don't know the answers.
Okay. Sure enough.
So um Preston and staff, what um what more do you need from us tonight?
I think uh I think we have the direction we need, Joanne, uh correct me if I'm wrong, but I I've gathered consensus based on the notes I've taken. Joanne, do you, do you think we need uh anything further?
No, I think we're good. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, Gary, Russ, you guys happy?
Pretty happy. I got two other little things I want to bring up, um. In talking to some folks around town here, I know that there's some concerns about the way the traffic runs in this area. Part of it has to do with. The amount of through traffic comes through Lena. One, partially from an industrial standpoint with large trucks coming down that way, and the also, the other is also from a viewpoint of traffic to the school. Um, I know that the businesses in the industrial park have concerns with the amount of school traffic that comes through there. While they're actually offloading trucks and moving forklifts and things back and forth across the street. So they have concerns about the amount of school traffic coming through there. And then further south down here in the residential, we have concerns with the amount of industrial traffic coming down Lena. Semi-related, but I just thought I would throw it out. I don't know, this is not the point of this meeting, but it's something that we need to think about and be addressing in the future.
I would consider that kind of a a heads up for staff to um do some brainstorming on signage and. Um ways to get people onto railroad as much as possible. I know that's already uh the goal and. You know, there's only only so much you can do when people are using their phones to get around. School traffic, I think we could probably deal with um somewhat through the school administration, get them to. Make sure they talk to parents and and kids who are driving and in, you know. Strongly encourage them to stay on railroad. But thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. I think um like you say, it's not really apropos to this discussion, but it's it's worth um putting on the. On the chalkboard for the staff.
It is for sure tricky going through Cora. It is for sure tricky going through Cora when, when there's parallel parking on both sides and you're trying to, there's two-way traffic, it gets a little dicey in there.
You mean diagonal parking on both sides?
No, in, on that stretch of Cora in the industrial section, people will park on both sides of the road. And it, if there's two-way traffic, you typically have to pull over to allow the other vehicle to come forward.
Only if you're driving a truck that's too big.
No, even just a car. Well, what are you saying?
The TJ is great. I sneak right on through.
Yeah, I, I think that Americans drive trucks that are way too big personally, but.
A motorcycle slips right on by, no problem. Cause I can go right on the sidewalk with it too.
Doing wheelies.
Sherry, you have anything else you want to add?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
I, I do have a quick question. With the six-foot sidewalk, is the city going to be plowing that in the layer?
No. The sidewalks are their responsibility all over town. I'm sorry, I don't, don't mean, I'm sorry if that sounded.
John, I noticed you shoveling your area. Two-foot sidewalk or whatever.
I don't, I don't have sidewalk. I'm lucky that way, but I, I do shovel what I have. And it's, it's always been a bone of contention, but all around town, commercial, residential, it's the neighboring property owner's responsibility to shovel their, their sidewalk and he probably remember Laura Fike, how she was so unhappy with the increased with the first sidewalk because she had to shovel it in front of her big building before she sold it. You know, it's, and I think, I think Russ tried to make that point. And the other thing I'd say is that in from my experience around town, the, the sidewalks that are, that we have now that are in that less traveled areas that might be sort of hybrid business residential. People often just do a couple shovel blades wide path. They don't shovel the entire sidewalk and that's okay. I don't have a problem with that. It's just a matter, I mean, I always laugh at the, that corner lot with the two double wides on it. On Clinton Street near the Sherbino, right across from space to create. Those folks rarely shovel at all. And if they do, it's one shovel width. And, you know, that we're not fining them or anything, but, I mean, your, your point's well taken, but it is, it's not, the, the town staff, public works crew, they plow the public paths and they plow all the way up the river trailways and they plow all this, the sidewalks on both sides of highway that are, that are, you know, town fronted the park and all that. So we take care of our sidewalks and everybody else is supposed to take care of theirs. And my response to the six-foot width is that, you know, in the, in the dead of winter, in a big storm, you probably don't have to shovel that, well, you definitely don't have to shovel the whole six feet. It's not necessary.
But you will be out there brooming the gravel off of it.
You know, we're actually pretty familiar with that matting and it, and it is truly amazing. I mean, one of our really large garden centers in Houston had used that. And it's just, it, it's a fantastic thing and it really does stabilize the gravel. And it allows the water to get through to the ground, which is always a goal of mine. I, I hate concrete and I hate paving just for that reason, because it blocks moisture getting down there and increases the heat. So I just, I absolutely hate that. But we're, you know, this block, as everyone knows, is heavily used, especially for festivals, things like that for parking, RV parking. We're already stripping that out on the east side with Lena Commons. And, and I don't know if y'all thought about where those are going to park now, because that's going to make it a whole lot harder.
Yeah, sixteen feet of gravel to deal with.
There's, there's going to be more parking on the east side than there is now because it's diagonal.
But not for all the RVs and all that. They come in for the farmers markets and all that.
RV shouldn't be parked in there anyway. They, they're supposed to park either behind the library or the other designated RV areas like Hyde and Railroad over on our side of town. I mean, your points are well taken. We, parking challenges are always going to be parking challenges and they're, they're bigger challenges when we have events. And we.
Yeah, and our block's got a lot of that now. I mean, I, I personally, I'm going to hate those bowl bouts too. It's like you're, you're moving a, something that so far we primarily have in commercial or putting in a residential. All three of us have trailers on our block, Miller's Johnson's and us. And, and so that just makes anytime you have to do anything with the trailer or anything like that is, is going to be a major pain in the butt. And that was one of the reasons too, that the parallel works better, you know, for the residents here. Plus, when you account for all the existing driveways, it was definitely the biggest. But anyway, that's my two cents. Russ will be the one out there shoveling anyway or plowing it with the Kubota, so. But it's good, this meeting's, this meeting's recorded, right? So the fact we could do one shovel width wide is a matter of.
So speaking of, does, do, do either of these options have, is there any difference in the street snow removal with either of the options? Maybe that's a question for Joanna. Does shove, does plowing the snow on the west side into the gravel any different than plowing it into a paved area? I mean, it's still going to accumulate. Of course, the snow will pick up the gravel, I guess.
Russ could probably answer that because he already does it anyway.
I think with.
We normally just plow the driving lanes.
Right, and that's very similar to what happens now. They plow the driving lanes. We'll end up moving whatever snow accumulates from that so that we can get vehicles in and out of the parallel parking. I suppose we'll need some direction from the town on exactly where they want us to push that once the development gets in across the street, but.
Okay, cool. So that's not a factor then in the choice?
All right, well, are we, are we done? Anything else?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I think we are done with that. I do have a, a quick request, a quick request of you all. At the last council meeting, you had mentioned the tri-agency dinner that you raised trying to organize coming up. Tamara, who you all heard speak at the joint work session not too long ago, sent some dates for, for us to choose from. I'm going to share my screen. And if you all will indulge me and check your calendar so I can provide her with some options. This will prevent me from having to do a doodleball, so I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Can you all see the email?
Yep.
Those are the six options. Obviously no time there, but the evenings of February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, March third, March tenth, March twenty-third and March twenty-fourth.
February twenty-third does not work for me. The twenty-fourth does.
I'm clear aside from March tenth.
Let me look at the third and the tenth. I can't do either the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth. The twenty-third's my birthday and the twenty-fourth, I'm going to a concert, so. Count me out. The third and the tenth. Looks like I, let's see, that's March third, right? Can't do March third.
So these dates are all within the composition of the current council and before the election essentially.
Yeah, it looks to me like, for me anyway, the only date I can do is the February twenty-fourth date. What's everybody else?
I can do the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth works great for me.
Yeah.
Fine by me.
All right, it sounds like February twenty-fourth is our choice, Preston.
Adam, did that work for you?
For me, I just got clearance.
Well, that was easy. I appreciate that. Thank you all.
Sorry, Adam, I didn't, didn't mean to exclude you there.
No, no, no worries.
Anything else?
I think, I think that's it. Mayor John, or, sorry, not John. Joanne, Ron, thank you so much for putting everything together.
You're welcome. Thank everybody for being available to work this through so that we can keep moving.
Yep. Hard to make everybody happy, yes, for sure.
All right, we'll try to leave you alone till February ninth.
Oh, I can't make food, no.
Have a great weekend, everybody.